I'd like to call this regular meeting, regularly scheduled meeting to order. Please call me.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Mabry.
Here.
Commissioner Fabian.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here. Please stand and join us in the closing.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start tonight with public comments. We have Officer Donald Moffitt, our state representative from the Southern Port District of which we are a part. He's the other way to come up and...
Don, you may have to slide the switch on the top toward you. There you go. Sounds like it's on. Now that way up there too, Josh. Okay. Well, good evening to everyone here watching, listening. Honored to be with you. Love me to start by saying I wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas and happy holidays as we're approaching that season. I have one purpose tonight. A few things just wanted to leave with you. Just wanted to reflect a moment, a few moments about serving and having the opportunity to serve this area, to represent Princeton and Bureau County in this region. I'd like to start that by introducing Marsha Ann Entwistle who's with me tonight, who's been the legislative assistant up here and helps us do things and have access and know what's going on and help in any way that we possibly could. So, I thank Marsha Ann Entwistle for the great service she's been. Thanks. And I just can't tell you what an honor and a privilege it's been to represent you in the legislature. I didn't run this time, so I'm retiring after 24 years of service in Illinois House. I don't know where the time went. When I went down there, I didn't have any gray hair. Now I'm just thankful to have hair. Things have changed. When I was down there, the kids were still in school. Now they're married and we have eight grandchildren so far and still counting. But it's, I just, I can't tell you enough how much respect I have for Princeton, the way your city is run, the county is run. If only the state were run as efficiently and transparent and responsive to the peoples, which you do. So, you're, it really holds you up as a model and that's way of most local government through this area. I came up through local government. My greatest respect for local government. I've always viewed the state and my role in the legislature as helping me to partner with you, not Big Brother hanging over you, but to work with you. You know, it's bittersweet leaving. There were more things I wanted to get done and I guess that's the way it is with any job. So, it was a very tough decision, but after lots of reflection, for family reasons, I decided not to run again. My wife's tired of running seven days a week. I don't know why she'd want to give up all this fun and travel, but we do have eight little grandchildren and hope to spend more time with them. So, please accept my thank you for having the opportunity to represent this area. Please accept my appreciation for what an outstanding job I think you do as local elected officials. I am so impressed with this area. I would like to, this is, of course, the city of the flags of freedom, so I'd like to do several different things. One, I'd like to present you with a flag both U.S. and Illinois that have been flown over the Illinois State Capitol with an accounting certificate. So, just a moment, I'll come up and present that to you, Mr. Mayor, as well as the current Illinois Blue Book and the handbooks for the members. You'll, the Blue Book's going to be 2013 and 14. You say we couldn't even bring an up-to-date one. That is the latest Blue Book. The handbook is the 1516. The 1516 Blue Book's not out yet. If one comes out before I leave on January 11th, I'll get one to you. Otherwise, my successor, Representative Elect Dan Swanson, will make sure that he gets it so he can ask him to get one. So, I will do that. I'm going to bring the flag up because I think it deserves separate presentation, but there's two certificates in here. One for, you know, for the U.S. flag flown over the Capitol and then for the state one. I am very pleased to present you and citizens of Princeton this flag that has flown over the Illinois State Capitol with certificate for both the and the Illinois. I'll bring you them over. So, no city deserves one more than home of flags of freedom. And that's another thing I would certainly commend you for is the flags of freedom and what a, you know, I go through you a lot of times at night coming around the meetings and I always look to see how far off I can see the flag, whether it's day or night, whatever. Certain works prior, like work with Mayor Kane and other officials, among the commissioners and as well as on the county board. So, it's just an honor to have served with all of those. Like I said, you set a very high standard. I had down here on the thing I wanted to mention, your great fire department, firefighters, police department, emergency service, ambulance. Your hospital just was recognized as one of those outstanding hospitals in the state of Illinois. It's got some firefighters here and I'm just thrilled to take it. And, you know, one of the things I championed during my tenure is for the fire service. And we've been able to work with you and got some grants and different things for different projects, but including equipment for the fire department. There's also an interest-free loan that's in place that if you haven't taken advantage of it at some point, you might be able to. It's a 20-year, no-interest loan. So far, we have loaned over $30 million, about $35 million, to over 180 fire departments. Been a place 13 years, no defaults and no general fund money. You say, well, my head's a state in trouble, how can you be loaning more money? It came from other sources, non-general, and a lot of it is from, add some fees on reckless driving and DUIs and things like that. The things that caused the need to have emergency vehicles. So, I appreciate firefighters being here. You have an outstanding emergency first responder department in this area. I will bring up the handbook, the Illinois flag, and make a closing comment. Marsha Ann, anything else that meant the Blue Book to be for you and the mayor? And if you would handbooks to your members? And then here's an Illinois flag and box for the... With that, I just say, keep up the great work you're doing in spite of what the state might be doing to you. Hopefully, the state will get a budget and be in a better position. But we just run it like you run your city, given that here things just keep getting better. Please accept my thanks. Appreciate you. So, with that, I'll close so you can go on with the rest of your meeting this time. And what an honor. Love this area. Thank you.
I would like to say, as Representative Don Moffitt brings his political career to a close, I would like to state publicly that the city of Princeton owes him a huge debt of thanks, not only for all he has done for us as a city, but for all of rural Illinois in general. Don has faithfully served our district with dignity and integrity in a time when all the problems we have in Springfield, has choked Springfield. Don Moffitt has been one of fewer legislators who has not been fearful to reach across the aisles and do the right thing. His common sense approach to governing has made, has been a model that his colleagues should learn from. The city of Princeton, as well as the surrounding communities, has benefited from Don's leadership. Don understood the needs of rural America and fought to improve economic development opportunities, equip firehouses and police departments, provide improved access to clean water and sanitation, equalize educational funding, and provide needed infrastructure. In short, I don't think Princeton would be where it is today without the loyal assistance of Don Moffitt in Springfield. Don, for all you have done for us during your impressive career, the citizens of Princeton thank you. And we wish you good health and happiness to you and your family as you enter the next chapter of your life. Thank you for your 24-year service.
Thank you. I would love to listen to your business. That's about 90 miles back home. And although the crops are harvested, I probably better head back that way. But I will be back through here and will stop every chance I get. And what a fabulous grade you have, district you have, entrance to the city now, businesses and so on. So, thanks. We'll see you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the firefighter. I didn't know they were going to be here, so I really appreciate the firefighter being here. I had in my notes to comment on what a great department you have, but not even know it because it's from the heart. They're my heroes. Thanks.
They're the best and we got a lot of it. Very fortunate to have them. Do you have any other public comments? Here, votes for the approval of minutes, Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting to be approved this way.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Corrections. Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
Hi. I'll go to the approval of invoices and we'll start with Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I have the invoices for public affairs and the Department of Accounts and Finances? The finance department, $6,350.65. Administration, $12,885.58. Self-insurance, $30,201. No expenses in economic development. Tourism, $4,158.36. Factory department, $1,990.42. No expenses in community development. Lovejoy Homestead, $247.50. General obligation, $235,000. Tax increment financing, $102,88. Total invoices for public affairs and Department of Accounts and Finances is $391,120,000. Mayor, I've reviewed these bills. I find them to be true and accurate and move to say to pay.
Motion's been seconded. Comments or corrections?
The question on the general obligation total, I'll take that 235 is correct.
All right. All right. There's more. Yeah. Do you want to add that up real quick, Don?
Well, it looks like it's about $330,000.
Focus on the... Yeah, we're okay. We'll get there. Can you focus on this question?
Commissioner Querom. Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
Hi. We're Commissioner Mabry. Thank you, Mayor Querom. As he hands the bills and payrolls to the Department of Streets and Public Improvement with followings. The total of the street department, $77,099.37. Waste water collection, a total of $40,111.13. Waste water administration, $34.8. Cemetery department, $7,119.48. Garbage expenditures, $11,391.37. Per grand total, $135,755.43. Mayor Querom, I've examined the bills and payroll, find to be true and correct and request payment be made.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Fabian.
Thank you, Mayor. As billed for public health, paid insurance expense, to the street department, I have Fire and ambulance department, I have $49,070.12. For total invoices of $101,271.90. I have reviewed these bills. I believe them to be true and accurate and I move to say to pay.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Fa- um, sorry, Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. So, I've got the bills, the bill on the public property utilities. Electric generation, total of $475,508.92. Electric distribution, $53,116.40. Electric administration, $16,369.11. Water keeping, $27,779.4. Water distribution of $1,670.78. And water administration of $102,709.7. For grand total, $677,159.16. We have examined your bills, believe them to be true and move to pay them.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. So, I've got the bills, the bill on the public property utilities. Electric generation, total of $475,508.92. Electric distribution, $53,116.40. Electric administration, $16,369.11. Telecommunication, $5.84. Water keeping, $27,799.4. Water distribution of $1,670.78. And water administration of $102,709.7. For grand total, $677,159.16. We have examined your bills, believe them to be true and move to pay them.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. So, I've got the bills, the bill on the public property utilities. Electric generation, total of $475,508.92. Electric distribution, $53,116.40. Electric administration, $16,369.11. Telecommunication, $5.84. Water keeping, $27,799.4. Water distribution of $1,670.78. And water administration of $102,709.7. For grand total, $677,159.16. We have examined your bills, believe them to be true and move to pay them.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor Querom. As he hands the bills and payrolls to the Department of Streets and Public Improvement with followings. The total of the street department, $77,099.37. Waste water collection, a total of $40,111.13. Waste water administration, $34.8. Cemetery department, $7,119.48. Garbage expenditures, $11,391.37. Per grand total, $135,755.43. Mayor Querom, I've examined the bills and payroll, find to be true and correct and request payment be made.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. As billed for public health, paid insurance expense, to the street department, I have $52,201.78. Fire and ambulance department, I have $49,070.12. For total invoices of $101,271.90. I have reviewed these bills. I believe them to be true and accurate and I move to say to pay.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. So, I've got the bills, the bill on the public property utilities. Electric generation, total of $475,508.92. Electric distribution, $53,116.40. Electric administration, $16,369.11. Telecommunication, $5.84. Water keeping, $27,799.4. Water distribution of $1,670.78. And water administration of $102,709.7. For grand total, $677,159.16. We have examined your bills, believe them to be true and move to pay them.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. So, I've got the bills, the bill on the public property utilities. Electric generation, total of $475,508.92. Electric distribution, $53,116.40. Electric administration, $16,369.11. Telecommunication, $5.84. Water keeping, $27,799.4. Water distribution of $1,670.78. And water administration of $102,709.7. For grand total, $677,159.16. We have examined your bills, believe them to be true and move to pay them.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. So, I've got the bills, the bill on the public property utilities. Electric generation, total of $475,508.92. Electric distribution, $53,116.40. Electric administration, $16,369.11. Telecommunication, $5.84. Water keeping, $27,799.4. Water distribution of $1,670.78. And water administration of $102,709.7. For grand total, $677,159.16. We have examined your bills, believe them to be true and move to pay them.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. As billed for public health, paid insurance expense, to the street department, I have $52,201.78. Fire and ambulance department, I have $49,070.12. For total invoices of $101,271.90. I have reviewed these bills. I believe them to be true and accurate and I move to say to pay.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. As billed for public health, paid insurance expense, to the street department, I have $52,201.78. Fire and ambulance department, I have $49,070.12. For total invoices of $101,271.90. I have reviewed these bills. I believe them to be true and accurate and I move to say to pay.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren. Thank you. So, I've got the bills, the bill on the public property utilities. Electric generation, total of $475,508.92. Electric distribution, $53,116.40. Electric administration, $16,369.11. Telecommunication, $5.84. Water keeping, $27,799.4. Water distribution of $1,670.78. And water administration of $102,709.7. For grand total, $677,159.16. We have examined your bills, believe them to be true and move to pay them.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you. So, I've got the bills, the bill on the public property utilities. Electric generation, total of $475,508.92. Electric distribution, $53,116.40. Electric administration, $16,369.11. Telecommunication, $5.84. Water keeping, $27,799.4. Water distribution of $1,670.78. And water administration of $102,709.7. For grand total, $677,159.16. We have examined your bills, believe them to be true and move to pay them.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren. Thank you. So, I've got the bills, the bill on the public property utilities. Electric generation, total of $475,508.92. Electric distribution, $53,116.40. Electric administration, $16,369.11. Telecommunication, $5.84. Water keeping, $27,799.4. Water distribution of $1,670.78. And water administration of $102,709.7. For grand total, $677,159.16. We have examined your bills, believe them to be true and move to pay them.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Mabry.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabian.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
I'll go with Commissioner Warren. Thank you. So, I've got the bills, the bill on the public property utilities. Electric generation, total of $475,508.92. Electric distribution, $53,116.40. Electric administration, $16,369.11. Telecommunication, $5.84. Water keeping, $27,799.4. fine fees and permits, operating grants and contributions. So those are then netted on the following page. And then on the bottom of that, you'll have tax revenue that's offsetting the net revenue up above. So this looks a little different than a for-profit income statement, but that's how that reads. So you'll see the city as a whole, not counting the hospital. There was a decrease in net position of three million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Moving on to the following set of statements. These are the fund financial statements on page eleven. So this is your individual major funds, the balance sheet of those. Starting on page thirteen. We have a reconciliation between the fund financial statements and the government-wide financial statements, the governmental activities. The government-wide financial statements are prepared on the accrual basis of accounting. And the fund financial statements are presented on the modified accrual basis. So you'll have some discrepancies. Fixed assets, loans, and the sort of other items are not accounted for in fund financial statements where they are on the government-wide. So that's where most of those reconciling items come from. The next page on page fourteen, probably go a little something fun. Change in, state of revenue expenditure and change in fund balance. So this is like the income statement for the funds. And then two pages later on page fifteen is the reconciliation to the fund income statements and the government-wide financial statements or governmental funds. Page seventeen is the statement of net position for proprietary funds. So this is your, your water, electric, sewer fund balance sheet. These numbers will be the same as what was on the government-wide since they're accounted for on the same basis of accounting. So there's no reconciliation then between these statements and the government-wide statements. So page eighteen, nineteen, page nineteen is the income statement portion of it. Page twenty is the cash flow statement for proprietary funds. Then on page twenty-two, these are the financial statements for the pension fund, for the police and fireman's pension fund. For the balance sheet and the income statement. And then you get to the notes of the financial statements. These notes are pretty similar to prior years. The only thing that would be a lot different than in the past would be the notes related to the IMRS pension fund, which would be note six. This is a long description of the different actuarial assumptions that go into calculating what the city's net pension liabilities are for IMRS. So this is the change from prior years before GASB sixty-eight was implemented. Other than that, all the other notes are just backup for different items on the financial statement. After missing for the financial statement, you have different supplementary funds or statements. You have budget actual for major government funds. This is covered on page. Each major governmental fund has a budget actual statement. Following those are the notes to the, to the budget actual statements. And then page seventy-one starts the combining statements of the nine major funds. So these are the, the smaller governmental funds that are now on the face of the financial statement. So this just summarizes those, again, those statements here, kind of like the fund financial statements from the fund. And that's about everything on the financial statement. That was just a, a quick overview. When you have a chance to actually go through the statements, if you've come across any questions that you'd have, if you feel free to contact me. Rachel, if you have any information, if you'd want to email or call me. I don't know if you had any questions tonight. I'd be happy to answer, but if not, Steve will go over the internal control report.
Just one, one quick question. Going back to our dividend activities, our net position.
Yes.
About three point seven million dollars less this year than we were last year.
Yes. So why that is? Off the top of my head, I'll give a breakdown. I'll give you a rundown. But Rachel, do you have any?
No, I mean, I think most of that is kind of what we've done before, extended insurance, exceeding what was budgeted last year and revenue coming short of what was budgeted last year.
So you had, you had a lot of capital projects that were done, so we started depreciating that. There was a lot of depreciation in there that wasn't there.
And the whole insurance component as well.
Another thing that was never accounted for was the pension liability. So this added some costs to it on the IMRA pension. Yeah. I, I can give you a breakdown of those specific items. It's been a couple of months since I specifically went over financial numbers. But I can give a breakdown of it.
Watch out for this here.
I'll keep this short and sweet. I think I saw a few beyond, so I didn't want to make sure I get out of here while everyone still has business to attend to. I'll go over the report on control or financial reporting and compliance for the year ended April thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Auditing standards requires us to discuss audit findings that we consider significant enough to discuss with those charged with governance, which is you guys. Does everyone have a copy of the report? So what I'd like to do is I'd like to skip all the, the first two pages and go back to the schedule of findings and responses. Here's where the real meat of it is. The main internal control item that we found during the year was bank reconciliation and cash. Oh, I'm sorry. There is no page number, but it's, if you flip past. So if you go to, if you count the title pages, page one, go to one, two, three, four. The schedule of findings and responses will be the header on that page. The main item here was cash reconciliations. We just did not see a good enough control over cash in terms of reconciliations, review of those reconciliations, or review of the reconciling items in overall. You can read the detail here about fact-taking checks and it not balancing to the general ledger. And you can also read management's response and the corrective actions. You'll see a theme throughout the corrective action of hiring a director of finance to oversee this process. It's a large enough city, and I know the city is in process of, of finding a qualified candidate. So if you look at the review of bank reconciliations, you turn the page, you got segregation of duties as well as investment reconciliation. Here is really where a director of finance will really make sure your financial statements and your general ledger, what you present to the board and the public is in correspondence with GAAP. It's the universal language of, of business and accounting. So if everyone's on the same page, you all know what you're looking at. You'll have better numbers. You'll have better control over cash, which of course has a large risk of misappropriation just to the nature of cash. Those were the main items I'd like to talk about. You can read through them. But the main item I wanted to bring up was the bank reconciliation. Does anyone have any questions on this report?
Well, the only thing I'll say, I, I rescrewed this earlier, but you know, I appreciate you, you know, we, we know these existed in the past. They were not brought to the attention of the council in the past. So I appreciate you being here tonight and, you know, providing this to us and having, you know, a frank discussion about it. So, and I, and I know that, you know, the responses and the risk correction and action plans in, in play on all of these. Right back, you know, before that you've got mentioned here. And we are on the, we are searching for a director of finance as well. So all positive going forward.
A, a stronger internal control environment makes our lives easier as well to look up to the item. So we appreciate everything you can do.
So you spent, you spent many time, many hours in this back room, I know.
That's right. On the phone afterwards and everything. We've been in communication with Rachel. If you have any questions, like Ben said, Rachel has our contact information. If, if on a random Friday night you found yourself with these reports and the financial statements you read through and you can't find the information you're looking for, or you need an explanation on something, contact Rachel. She'll get us, get you our information. We're always available to, to email, phone call. So I've got a little follow-up information to your previous question.
Do you want to talk to him? I've been saying to talk to the light, so.
So if you go to page sixteen of the report.
This is for this.
Yeah. Of the financial statement. So if you look at the top of that page, most of the loss that I've discussed was in the governmental funds. So if you look at the fund financial statements, you actually have a loss of nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, which is a lot, but that's still a lot smaller than the three million dollars I mentioned. So a lot of that is one point one million dollars of depreciation over capital outlays. So you'll see in that first reconciling item. If you go further down, you'll see the one point two million dollars for internal service funds are used by management to charge the cost of certain activities in individual funds. The rest of the, the internal service fund is reported with governmental activities. So this is, I believe, the self-insurance issue. And then the last item, the IMR pension and the police and fire pension, you have six hundred and seventy thousand dollars that are charged to the governmental funds. So that's a huge portion of where that loss is coming from. You saw, you saw the, a large loss in the governmental funds on more of the cash in and out, but it's not the three million dollars that look from the governmental line. So anything like this.
Any other comments?
I just want to thank Ben and Steve, since I've been working with them for a year now on some of these things when they did the audit. Last year, we talked about that one and then worked on this one. And as they mentioned, we have a lot of steps in place to take care of some of these. We've been working with the software company extensively to get our reconciliations corrected. And hopefully next year it'll be a much smoother process for them going forward. So thanks for your work.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation, for coming up here, giving the presentation. Appreciate that. You can, you can talk.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hopefully the kids are in bed already. Have a good evening.
Next I have resolution R dash one six dash zero three three. It is a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Princeton, Illinois to enter into an economic development incentive agreement with LNL Properties of Sterling. Let me just read a portion of this. Whereas the business property of twenty-one oh six to twenty-one ten North Main Street, commonly referred to as the old Walmart building, has been vacant for ten years. Without assistance from the city, the property and building shall remain vacant and unproductive. Whereas LNL Properties of Sterling, Illinois desires to purchase the property and lease the property to a third party by c of the property in the city, the project, if the city agrees to rebate a portion of any sales tax received by the city that are generated by the project for a certain period of time. And whereas it is in the best economic interest of the city to enter into an economic development incentive agreement with LNL Properties of Sterling in order to strengthen the commercial value of the project property through job creation, enterprise expansion, detailed in exhibits A, B, and C of this document. I have reviewed this document, and we think we've all spent a lot of time hearing about what aspects of this property are going to be improved and may as a real benefit to the city of Princeton. With that in mind, I move that we approve this resolution.
Right.
Motion to second, comments?
I'll just make a few quick comments. This is a similar, one that came previously with the first developer for this property. So it's the same sort of thing with the sale price the city gets the first ten thousand. The next ten thousand will be rebased to them. Any portion above that would be split fifty-fifty. And this goes towards the FAD improvement, pardon, improvement to the building. And it's, the total sale tax instead of the net to exceed a hundred thousand or go past the number two thousand and twenty-three. So whichever one of those comes first.
Other comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mavory.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next I have ordinance O dash one six dash zero one eight. It's levying taxes for corporate purposes for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May, two thousand and seventeen, and ending on the thirtieth day of April, two thousand and eighteen, for the city of Princeton, Bureau of County, Illinois. I move that we approve this ordinance. I'm sorry. This is the first reading. And I recommend that we move this forward to the second reading.
The second.
Motion to the second, comments? Rachel?
So this is the first reading for the tax levy ordinance. There's a spreadsheet on the back that holds all the detail on it, so I'll just kind of go over that. Quickly give you the summary of that. So our twenty sixteen E and B is actually down by about seven hundred and five thousand dollars. That's about a half percent decrease over the previous year. So when you look at our twenty sixteen levy, which is in the four columns over to the right, we also levy taxes for the libraries, since they're included under the city, so I separated that out to the city of Princeton and the library. So the twenty sixteen total levy for the city is about one point two million. And the twenty sixteen total levy for the library is five hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents. So the total levy combined for both of those is about one point seven million. And so the rate is about one hour and twenty-nine cents. And this stays under the true protection requirements, which is less than five percent increase from the year. So this is the first reading of this. Do you have any questions? Let me answer them.
And that one point two nine rate, that's the combined library and city.
Correct. Mm-hmm. So the city's rate is point nine. Library's rate is point three, three nine, point four.
Any other comments, questions? Can you call roll?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mavory.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Newman. I'll go with Commissioner Fabian.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the statistics for the month of October. UCOM has had total incoming calls of seven hundred and eighty-two. Ambulance EMS related, three hundred. Fire related, ninety-one. City utility related, eighty-three. Fire department, we have total call of a hundred and seventy. Five fires, rescue and EMS, seven hundred and forty-eight, seventeen others. For the police department, we have a total of calls responded to at four hundred and fifty-eight. Miles patrol is eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine. Service calls handled, one seventy-seven. Arrests and warnings, fifty. Accidents handled, twenty-two.
Thank you, Commissioner Fabian. I'll go with Commissioner Mavory.
Thank you, Mayor Querem. This evening we've had a vote from the city Princeton Street Department since Thursday and Friday, of course, holidays. We have due to the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday on November twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, garbage and recycling routes will be as follows. Thursday, November twenty-fourth routes will be picked up on Monday, November twenty-eighth. And Friday, November twenty-fifth routes will be picked up on Tuesday, November twenty-ninth. Please stack your garbage and recycling out by five AM. If you ever have any questions, you can call the street department at eight seven two, seven three, three one. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. I'll go see them to report.
The only thing I have is our tax increment financing reports that I just do every year for the city controller. So there's just a copy of the report in here. No changes this year in the TIPS, the annual bond payments and the IGA payments that are being associated. Those are the only changes that's been submitted and accepted by the state.
Thank you. Any comments on it? I do not have any comments. Old business. Any new business? Any public comment? It's interning, Jim.
Good evening. My name is Jim Posen with Republic Services. I know everybody's going in the executive session. I wanted to get home early, so I'll make this really brief. I just wanted to thank the board and the committee for giving Republic Services the opportunity to, to bid and also to partner with the city of Princeton with the transfer station. Always also would like to thank you guys for hearing our, hearing our presentation regarding the facility as well. And I would like to stress that the importance is if you guys have any questions, if there's any concerns, any comments, please reach out to me. That's, that's what I'm here for. So if there's any confusion or any questions that, that come up, reach out to me and we'll be able to answer them or come up with something for you guys. I also want to reinforce that Republic Services, you know, we're, we're, we hope to be able to build a, a longer lasting partnership with the city of Princeton. I think we bring a lot to the table. We value what's important to, to the residents, what's important to the, to the city as well. So like I said, if there's, if there's any questions, you know, I can't state, I can't state that enough, enough times. If there's any questions, concerns, any comments, anything that needs to be cleared up, please reach out to us. I know this is an important decision for you. Thank you very much. And everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
And I would also like to offer everybody have a great, great Thanksgiving. Can't believe it's only a couple of days already, but. Any other public comment? I will not entertain a motion until we turn to a second session. I move that we adjourn to executive session under Hillman statute to discuss the setting of a price for a sale or lease of property owned by the public土地. And then to our regular meeting scheduled for Monday, December fifth, two thousand and sixteen, seven PM here at Salem. Motion to the second, call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mavory.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabian.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. And the adjournment.